Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the North Bend City Council meeting for April 2nd, 2024. Will the city clerk please call roll?
Mayor Pro Tem Alan Gotthelf.
Present.
Councilmember Brendan Elwood.
Present.
Councilmember Mark Jocelyn.
Present.
Councilmember Heather Cullen.
Here.
Councilmember Christina Rustic.
Here.
Councilmember Susan Torgerson.
Here.
Councilmember Errol Tramalata.
Here.
All are present, Your Honor.
Thank you. Can the clerk, uh, please call us a flag salute?
Yeah.
I said, "Call this flag salute."
We know what you're saying.
Well, we'll go on with it.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, we're off and running, folks. Okay. At this time, I would like to announce that Item Number 7, AB 24-036, Motion Authorizing Contract with Republic for Sledgehauling, and Item 8, AB 24-037, Motion Authorizing Third Amendment to GNO Contract, have been pulled from tonight's agenda. These items may come back to a future council meeting. Counselor, are there anything, is there anything else that we can do or talk about before we move on to consent agenda? Anything else I need to know? Okay, thank you. Yes, I'd like to make a motion to have, uh, AB 24-034 moved to the main agenda. Perfect, thank you very much. Uh, we will now move on to the last, well, hold on, second me, yeah. Second. So we got motion.
I think it just gets pulled.
It just gets pulled.
Yeah, it's just pulled. It's not a motion, it's just.
We're gonna have some excitement tonight. Let's not begin so early.
Are we pulling and moving that to the end of?
We're pulling it. Pulling it off? Is that what you're requesting?
Are we pulling it off or moving it to discuss?
I'm sorry, I don't mean to, I thought we'd come to agreement as counsel that if, if a member wants something pulled from the main agenda, from the consent agenda to the main agenda, they just say so, and that happens, and then we move on, and it will come up, it's up to the mayor then to make sure. It does come up during, uh, councilmatic conversations, uh, and is addressed in, uh, as part of the main agenda.
I think there's, there's two faults to it. You can pull an item that doesn't come into the agenda, or you can pull an item that then gets put down after, like, on this one, it would be item number 13 that will be getting discussed, and so that was the question at hand. Is this something that we pulled to move to 12 to have a discussion? The other two items we're gonna have to get more information to be able to discuss them.
Right.
This item, is this an item that we're pulling that we're gonna put at the end of the agenda is what I'm trying to get from.
I propose that we pull item number five and move it to the end of the agenda tonight.
Thanks.
Thank you. Very good. We will now move on to the consent agenda. We have six items on the consent agenda. Can I get a motion?
No move.
Thank you. Can I get a second?
Second.
Don't everybody rush at it, but thank you. Okay, that was, uh, motion was made by Mr. Gotthelf and.
I'm sorry, point of information, I thought three items were pulled. So if three items were pulled, then there should only be five items on the consent agenda.
Uh, yes. That, I'm, uh, my apologies, that is correct. Five. Thank you.
Because you're asking for approval of consent agenda as modified.
Correct.
So I will sec, I will second that, uh, second the consent agenda as modified.
Thank you, uh, okay, motion approved by Mr. Gotthelf and seconded by Mr. Tramalata, I hope. Yes, thank you, we can move on. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion, that's the quietest in the room. All, the motion carries and is unanimous. Before we move on to citizens' comments, as indicated on tonight's agenda, if there are, you are attending remotely and would like to submit public comment, please submit your written comments via in-person drop-off, mail, fax, or email to sopadol@northbendwa.gov by 5:00 PM on the day of meeting. We are no longer taking public comments for those attending remotely via Zoom unless you have reached out to the city clerk in advance for the meeting to request accommodations. We'll now move on to citizen comments. At this time, if you would like to comment on an, an item on, not on the tonight's agenda, we would invite you to come forward to the podium. Uh, if you have requested accommodation with a city clerk and wish to speak during citizens' comments, please raise your hand through the virtual platform, and we will take your comments after in-person comments. Please remember to state your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes to speak. Is there anyone jumping? Oh, look who's here. We, we love you, Deb. Come on up. Thanks for being here.
Thank you for having me. Hello, hello, Deborah Landers, 14615, 438th Avenue Southeast in North Bend. And once again, I'm here about North Bend Art and Industry, and I just want to remind you that we are planning our first festival of the year, which is gonna be on June 15th, Art Off the Rails. It's gonna be at Our Railroad Park. We are doing it in collaboration with Snoqualmie, um, their historic downtown merchants group, and the, um, Northwest Railway Museum also. So the, the festival will actually be at three sites. We happen to have the best site, which will have the most artists. So last year, we had 34 artists. This year, we're aiming for 50. We'll still have three great bands, we'll still have food trucks, we're praying that it's not gonna rain. And just a reminder, and we're, again, we're excited about the park. We appreciate the city's support in helping us prepare the park, so it's a pleasant place for individuals. And that's all, except if you have questions.
Any questions from Counselor Deb?
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you, Deb.
See you in a few weeks.
Thanks for coming. All right, anybody else online?
We have Michael Thomas online.
Okay, thank you. Michael, are you with us? This is your time.
Hey, can you hear me, counsel?
Uh, a little bit, maybe. Can everybody hear?
Yeah, there's not many. Uh, Mike Thomas, 1231 La Forest Drive, SE. Uh, good evening, counsel. Uh, by the way, I appreciate, uh, I believe this item was moved to main agenda, which was the effort to address, um, access for persons with disabilities in the, uh, city right-of-way. Uh, I, I think it's very important to also remember that remote access, uh, for this meeting, such as via Zoom or telephone, not only is, um, you know, supported by the Open Public Meetings Act, but is also supported by Title II of the Americans with Disabilities Act. In other words, in the provision of government services for things like equal access or opportunities to participate in public meetings. Uh, I believe that every time that, uh, this system fails, or that this is not correctly executed, that this is, uh, causing a problem for those of you that, for those of us that participate because of reasons of disability. And I would remind counsel of that in addition to things such as the OTMA, such as not requiring free registration for participants in meetings. I do have a, for a few other comments, um, in rebuttal around the, uh, the last council meeting, as unfortunately, I was not able to comment. Uh, one, I'm very concerned about the continued representations, such as in the State of the City address around water conservation. I view it as a hypocrisy to continue to, to, to do development in the face of imposing water restrictions on folks that need to use water to maintain their properties for their own personal enjoyment, and as well as to mitigate the risk of wildfire under red flag conditions. There's no question in my mind that the best thing that people can do is to maintain their lawns and landscaping within 30 feet of their home in a green and verdant state. Second thing is also, uh, my opposition to water continues about the hypocrisy when, um, other agencies propose wasteful uses of water and cite them in the city, for example, such as a public pool. Public pool will use the coolant of more than 100 homes, if not more, in Phase 1 and Phase 2 of that proposal. Again, it's hypocrisy to impose water restrictions when people in the city and nearby water associations, when the city continues its wasteful practices of development and essentially taking water away for more development at ill-conceived projects such as public pools. I'm further concerned by the, the intersection, and by the way, with things such as tree plantings near rivers and riparian waves. It's great that the city is, is planning this, but private owners might choose to mitigate their fire risks by cutting down trees within distances of rivers because their homes are approximate. And I may have more comments on this later, but I'm very, very concerned about this. Finally, I would really like the mayor or, or counsel to address what was mentioned at the city January retreat, where it's apparent that the timeframe for the development of the National Guard facility, also known as a vehicle maintenance facility or readiness center, have been significantly extended. I believe it's a relief to the citizens of our city that this facility may not ever be attained, may not ever be implemented. It is inappropriate for this facility to be located in such proximity to schools and residential neighborhoods in such, in, in such a state.
Pardon me, Michael, you'll have to wrap it up.
Done.
Michael, did you, you'll have to wrap it up.
I'm concluded. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Michael. Have a great evening. Anybody else online? But I can't see anybody.
Nobody else online.
Thank you so much. We will now move on to announcements, presentations, and appointments. Item nine is the introduction. Uh, tonight, we have the introduction of our new police captain. Chief Lynch, will you please come forward to introduce, uh, our new captain? Thank you so much for being here.
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. So tonight, I have the pleasure of delivering some good news, um, from the last time I was up here with all that bad news. Um, so I get to formally introduce our new captain, Snoqualmie Police Department. And it's someone that, um, is, has meant a lot to me in my police career. Um, I've known him for probably 13, going on 14 years. Gary Horacey was my number one choice from the beginning. Um, and I, I feel honored that, that he has taken this position with our department to serve, uh, both of our communities. A little bit about Gary, um, he started his law enforcement career in 2006 with a department called the Shirts Police Department, which is north of San Antonio, Texas. He worked there for four years before relocating to the state of Washington, where he, um, took a position as a police officer with the Enham Claw Police Department. Um, he served as a patrol officer, a field training officer, and he held several instructors' positions throughout his career. And he was promoted to the rank of sergeant in 2018 and remained in that position until three weeks ago, when we brought him to the Snoqualmie Police Department. Um, most of my time working with him has been, um, on the Major Crimes Task Force. Um, he came to the, the task force in 2017 and quickly became my go-to guy on that, on that squad of guys. Um, he became my number two when I took over the task force, um, in, uh, in 2019. And he's someone that I, I look up to, I trust him. Um, and one of the things you gotta understand is, when you get to the ranks of captain, or, or chief, or lieutenant, or something like that, you have worked your entire adult life to get to those positions, and you have dedicated yourself to a craft that is not easy. This is a very difficult job, um, to, to hold down for that many years. And, um, I'm just, I'm thrilled to have him. He's been here for three weeks, so he doesn't really know a lot about the ins and outs, but I've started to give him a few projects. Um, and we're, we're getting along very well, so I just wanted to come before you and, um, and introduce Gary Horacey, and you have some words?
Thanks. Uh, I just wanna say thank you. Thank you, Chief Lynch, for this opportunity. Thank you to both the cities, uh, you know, claw, or Snoqualmie, North Bend, and even my former cities, uh, Shirts and Enham Claw. It wouldn't be possible to do this without everything I've learned through my career. Um, like you said, it's not an easy task to be moving up. There's a lot of changes throughout state law and everything else that make our, make our jobs a little more difficult sometimes, and, you know, not to mention the safety of the job itself, so. I look forward to working with each of you and, and both cities and going forward.
Thank you, Captain. It's a pleasure to have you here. Thank you so much. Uh, any questions or comments from counsel?
You gotta have some questions for him.
Oh, okay. I gotta be quick tonight. I just wanted to say welcome, and we are very happy to have you, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rustic. Anybody else? And, Mr. Brendan.
Same. Uh, thank you. Uh, it's a pleasure meeting you briefly this afternoon. Um, I look forward to all the, the outside talent that you've learned elsewhere and bringing it here, and really innovating and building on the chief's, uh, kind of go, uh, sensibility of what we need to do in our community that may be different and be me, maybe more effective. So I appreciate the new blood, and I look forward to everything that you'll be able to do and, and welcome to our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Welcome, and thank you for accepting this position and for being part of Snoqualmie and North Bend.
Thank you.
Thank you, Captain. Like I said.
We reiterate it as well.
Up and along. Everybody's excited that you're here.
We're excited that you're here, and, um, we hope you love it here, and if there's anything we can do to make your stay better, let us know as well.
Well, thank you. I, I used to live in Issaquah when I first moved up here, so I'm familiar with the area, and, you know, it's one of the things that drew me back here. Um, so it's, it's a nice area, and it's, you know, to be honest, there's not a lot of difference between Enham Claw and here either, so, you know, cities are about the same size if you divide them up, so it's, it's a nice task to look at expanding it into combined cities.
That's great. Anybody else? I don't wanna miss anybody. Okay, have a great night. Thank you, we all, thank you for being here sincerely. Thank you, Ca, thank you, Chief, and thank you, Captain. Okay, item 10. Now we're moving on to a proclamation, Sexual Assault Awareness Month. And here we go. Whereas sexual assault is pervasive, every 68 seconds, someone is sexually assaulted in the United States. And whereas rape is among the most under, under-reported crimes for reasons that include victims' fear of being disbelieved or further traumatized within systems designed to support them, additional barriers such as language, immigration status, gender bias, and systemic racism further oppress and silent, vic, silenced victims. And whereas individual and community impacts of sexual violence are rooted in and compounded by racism, sexism, heterosexism, and other forms of oppression, Black, Indigenous, and other people of color, people living in poverty, LGBTQ people, elders, people with disabilities, and other people targeted by oppression are disproportionately affected by sexual violence in significant and complex ways. And whereas 41% of Americans have been personally subjected to harassing behavior online, and, and people with historically oppressed groups are more likely to experience online harassment, mirroring inequities we will, we see elsewhere in the society. And whereas negative impacts of sexual violence, trauma on adults, youth, and children include fear, concern for safety, physical and mental health issues, injury, and missed work or school. And whereas sexual violence exists on a continuum of behavior that includes racist, sexist, transphobic, homophobic, albiest, or other hate speech, this ranges from rape jokes to verbal harassment to physical assaults. And whereas working together as a community, we can alleviate the trauma of sexual violence by ensuring supportive resources are available to all survivors, while standing up to actively disrupting harmful attitudes and behaviors that contribute to sexual assault. Now, therefore, I, Mary Miller, Mayor, join advocates in communities throughout King County in taking action to prevent sexual violence by standing with survivors and proclaiming April 2024 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month in the city of North Bend, and encourage all to commit to a safer future for all children, young people, adults, and families in our community. Thank you very much. Okay, item 11, presentation, Snoqualmie Valley Food Bank. Very happy to have you here tonight. Please come to the podium. And I'd like to introduce, uh, Allison Roberts and Dylan Johnson. Allison, you up first? Our pleasure.
Partnering and working together to build a strong and resilient community. And I know that through our collaboration, we'll be able to make a meaningful difference in the lives of those that are most in need here in the valley, um, and limit, um, food insecurity here. Um, with that, um, thank you again for the generous support, um, and for the opportunity to be here. I'd like to introduce Dylan Johnson. He is our Food Bank Operations Manager. Um, I'm very fortunate to be coming in, working with a wonderful team. Um, Dylan runs the day-to-day operations, and he's really, truly the heart and soul of the food bank. Um, so he'll be going through, giving us, um, an overview of our operations, giving some insight into the people that we serve, our greatest challenge, and some ways to get involved. So with that.
Thank you, Allison. Welcome, Dylan.
Thank you very much. Uh, thank you, Allison. We're very excited to have you, and I'm really looking forward to the future of the food bank. Um, I'm Dylan Johnson, Operations Manager. And I'd just like to go through a couple of slides that were prepared actually by Allison. Um, so, yeah, so. So, um, we try to provide food assistance with dignity. Um, there are about 250 households each week that come between 600 and 700 individuals. It's quite a lot of people. It takes many dozens of volunteers. Um, we're open three days a week. Today, we're open 3:00 to 6:15 for folks who work in the day shift. Uh, tomorrow, we're open all day long. Um, and then Thursday, just for senior citizens only in the morning for an hour and a half, and then open to everyone. It is a grocery store model where people go in with carts, and they can select what they want with certain limits for household size. Um, and we are in a small town, and we do know our neighbors really well. You just get to know everybody here, as you all know, the grocery store, or the bank, or anywhere. And it's, it's a very small town. People might be surprised who relies on the food bank in our, in our neighborhood here. Next slide, please. So the type of people we serve, anyone here, even, you know, middle-class, upper-middle-class, e, everyone's affected by the prices at the grocery store. It's somewhat outrageous. You buy a few items, a hundred dollars, you know? Um, so there are more folks signing up. 35% of the individuals are children, and that's just heartbreaking sometimes to see children struggling, uh, with food security. 37% adults and 28% are seniors. Um, just this week, we're providing extra food for spring break coming up next week. And we provide for 10 weeks of summer vacation. A lot of kids don't receive the food that they need if they don't go to school. Um, that's, yeah, that paints a picture. So, um, many of the people that we serve work. Some people think, oh, they probably don't have a job or something. Some people have multiple jobs. I see people coming in, in their work uniforms during a quick lunch break to see if they can come and just get a little extra food, whether it's, you know, any, any job in town. Um, some of the other examples of people that we serve are, there are some homeless veterans who served in Vietnam who live in their car, and we provide basically all that they can afford. Uh, people have medical issues. There are some folks that come in who are around my age, who've never been before, they've recently been laid off, a very good tech job, but they have a full family. Um, and get blindsided by a layoff, and they're bewildered. They've never been to a food bank. They don't know what to do, not the first thing to do. And they'll come some for maybe a few weeks or a month. Then they'll come in with really excited, you know, I, I got a job, and I never see him ever again. There are other individuals who, um, have confided in me. This is private, we don't, you know, not to name anyone, but maybe they've struggled with, um, substance abuse or anything like that, and they've cleaned up their act. Um, I know one individual who started their own business and is thriving. I haven't seen them at the food bank in three or four months, and it's amazing. Then there are also these senior citizens who will come probably every week for the rest of the remainder of their lives because what they live off of is not enough, not nearly enough from social security. And they, many have no one, no children, no siblings, no, no one, anyway. So that's, that's hard, but that's the reality. Uh, next slide, please. Provide more than food. Um, so when, when you're facing financial stress, you've gotta pay your bills, you know? Um, so maybe you'll, you'll start cutting the food budget a bit. You can't have your lights turn off on your family, or the power, or the heat, so they'll come, they'll come to us. Uh, we do connect them with resources. We have a lot of partner agencies. DSHS Mobile Office comes there, and so we are kind of a hub for people in need of more than just food. Um, they can provide things like, you know, um, SNAP benefits, EBT, stuff like that. Hope Link will be there, providing energy assistance. The library does come and provides free literature for people and books. Once a month, St. Clair's Church comes and provides hygiene and personal, uh, essential items, you know, toilet paper and stuff. And then we even have a pet food bank that comes once a month. People can get pet food for a lot of times, rescue and stuff. And then we have a kid vantage, so, um, parents can come and get diapers, formula, clothes, and various other things for their kids, and that's a big deal. Uh, next slide, please. The hardest part we have right now is the need is growing, but our space is not. My understanding is the space we have was once a garage of the North Bend Community Church. It is amazing what people have done. Um, various people have lended their time and effort and their skills, building racks, shelves, making it work, you know, wiring it, all these things, but it's small. And so, uh, we can only have about four people in there at a time shopping. The lines are, can be very long. Um, outside, it's tough here, you know, sometimes in the summer, it's in the mid 90s, it's really hot. Uh, sometimes it's very cold, and many of the people that we serve, they are very vulnerable. Um, some of which, you know, have cognitive, uh, decline or disabilities, um, physical disabilities. Many people are in canes or wheelchairs, and it's hard to have them, just to watch them have to sit out there for so long. It's heartbreaking. So what we really need is a new space, and that is a tall order, and I'm fully aware of that. I don't know where we will end up doing that, but our lease, uh, is supposed to be up at the church the first of the year, 2025. And we've looked for various structures, buildings. I'm just reaching out right now. We, we need to find that somehow, some way. So if anyone has any, anyone they know, or any way that we can start a conversation on moving to a new building, that is what we really, really need. Um, you know, it's, yeah, that, that's basically the bottom line of the struggles we're facing right now. So, next slide, please. So there is a focus, uh, growth. We need to find a location that better serves the needs, connection. We wanna increase community engagement and support and advocacy. We need to serve as a voice for the community in legislative matters that impact our mission. And also, what we can always use is more people to help, um, whether it's just their time, their energy, donation. One thing I will say too, that not everyone knows, is a dollar donation, we'll take any food donation so happily and gratefully, but $1, I get special deals from the places I purchase produce. Uh, once a week, I get from Charlie's. They give me a special sheet of items that need to be eaten soon, that are still excellent food for a fractional price. Uh, I'm just so, so cheap. And so financial donations are huge. Even $5 here, $10 there, it really, really goes a long way. And I wanna thank you all for hearing us today, and hope you have a wonderful evening.
Thank you, Dylan. And is there any questions or comments from counsel?
Anybody have any questions?
Yeah, no, don't run away. Uh, I think Mr. Jocelyn was.
So there's no expectation that the current lease will be renewed? Is this what I'm hearing?
That is not, um, guaranteed, Allison.
Yeah, I, it's, it's not guaranteed. We do have the option to go month to month afterwards, but we are very keenly looking for a new space, um, just because we're, eh, we're starting to just burst at the seams, and it's starting to be, we're not able to truly serve our clients in a dignified fashion.
And there's no parking lot of any kind. Um, many of the neighbors probably are a little dismayed when, you know, every bit of street parking is taken, there's people crossing the street. Uh, it's tough. Yeah, other questions?
Um, can you touch on the youth again? Um, so is there, like, a teenager come in at any time and shop or whatever? And then also, kind of secondary to that, during the summer, are there opportunities? Or I guess maybe this is a better question to say, if you have the space, would it be like cafeteria style? Something where they're, uh, like a middle school or a high schooler could come in, grab a sandwich in the summer. Like you said, they're not, they're struggling when they're not in school.
This is the dream. Um, my background is many years in restaurant work, but also, uh, my BA is in sustainable agriculture. I grow a lot of food, huge garden. I am really interested in local produce, educating folks on how to do that and how to cook. And I would love to have the option of a hot or cold meal right now, ready to go. Um, I would be more than happy to spearhead something like that if we had that kind of space. Yeah, absolutely. And then, um, the other, did I touch on everything you?
Yeah, well, then, just as you operate now, can, uh, a high schooler or a teenager come in and shop? Do they have to be with? come in and shop? Do they have to be with an adult or how does that, how does that work in terms of youth access to?
Uh, food bank clients sign up as households. So if they're part of a household, um, they could come and shop on behalf of their household. Um, we do have, um, certain circumstances where, um, a minor, um, is maybe not part of official household. Um, and in that case, yes, they could shop on their own. Yes.
And to touch on that as well, uh, the social worker at Mount Si High School, we have a great relationship with Lauren Thomas. She's amazing and she informed me much to my dismay this year that there are somewhere around twenty high school students that she knows that are homeless, whether or not there's serious trouble at home, whether or not they're couch surfing or what. But we provide food directly to her. Um, oftentimes, and she can give them stuff to get through the weekend. And we also partner with Feed Kiddos that is here in North Bend at the Outlet Mall. And they have been doing backpack programs for the weekend for years, but now we are combining efforts, um, just to make that better. And in every bag that we gave out today, um, to families to give the extra food for spring break, it had a note that said, are you interested in a backpack program? Contact Feed Kiddos to get a weekend bag. So we're trying to expand that and spread the word.
And if you had the right space, would it, based on everything you presented? Have you explored like a mobile servicing for some of your most like elderly, right? Especially when the weather's either one way or the other, incredibly hot, incredibly cold.
Right. Um, that would be amazing. We right now have a very small delivery service for folks who can't get out, yes, but it's completely volunteer run. Um, there's only a few of us who are employed at the food bank and all the rest is just out of the goodness of their heart volunteers, but we have three people to, just today, who go on various drop offs to some of the senior living apartments and things like that. I personally drive, um, every Friday when we get food in that can't be given the following Tuesday when we're open, I drive it to the two, um, senior housing complexes that I'm aware of that are here, right near in town and give them anything that's perishable that needs to be eaten over the weekend. Uh, we do everything we can for that, but that is a high priority. If we had the space and the ability to do that, that's crucial. Yes. Yeah, thank you.
Anybody else from council? Any questions?
Mr. Goto.
Yeah, why, why we've got a vast audience beyond here. Tell us how we can get ahold of you. I mean, where donations? I see we've got a website. If there's phone numbers, there's anything else that you'd like the public to know? How they can donate money, how they can donate that stuff. Now's a good time to put that forward.
Thank you for that. Uh, much appreciated. So our website is uh, Snoqualmie Valley Food Bank dot org right there. And that has probably everything you would need, um, to be able to get involved and to donate. Um, people come and give me cash or checks directly sometimes, but there's also, I believe there's PayPal. Um, you can have a monthly recurring donation, things like that. There, there are many options uh, for that. And the phone number is four two five eight 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 seven eight three two. You can always call us there or, um, when we're there, we'll leave a message if not. Am I missing any, anything like that for possible ways to donate or be involved?
Um, if anyone's interested in checking out the operation, you can always stop by. Um, anytime that we're open, our hours of operation, um, are on the website. Um, along with some information on volunteering, if you're interested in getting involved, um, that way we can always use more hands.
And, um, we are both there Monday through Friday. Um, and I even recently just have a weekend assistant manager who's there Saturdays and Sundays, which was always lacking because it was tough to get people there. So to drop off donations, you can actually come like seven days a week and you can, there's usually someone there to chat with. Um, it'd probably be easier if we weren't distributing and there's a huge line, but I'm, I'm open to talking anytime to anybody about this ever. So, yeah. Sincerely. So, anyway.
And anybody else? Nope, nope. Okay. Brendan.
Thank you and, and thank you for your presentation. It was fantastic and, and informative. Um, and thank you for being a part of that program and adding value to our community. It's, it's often food insecurity is an overlooked thing. I mean, many of us who have jobs, we, we don't even think, it doesn't even register until nice folks like you come up and remind us that, hey, look, there are others out there that can use help, whether it be a dollar or a loaf of bread. Um, so thank you very much for keeping this alive and in our present awareness and all that you do.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Yep. Mark, yes.
Well, yes, the service you provide is just remarkable. It impacts people's lives more directly than much of what we do here. Certainly our decisions impact people's lives, but on a daily is there food on the table basis? What you are doing is, uh, just incredible. Can you paint any kind of regional picture? What's, where, where's the nearest similar facility to the one that you run?
The nearest food bank?
Yeah.
Um, the ones I'm aware of, there's, it's called Food and Clothing Bank is, is good sized. Um, I know that there is a Fall City Food Bank and a Preston Food Bank. My understanding is that they are only open once a week and it is much smaller. And from what I understand, we are very fortunate to be able to provide a lot more in the way of, uh, meat and dairy and milk and eggs and, and some of the more expensive things because even though we have a teeny tiny little place, that thing, I'd love for anyone to come take a tour. It is packed. We have a large freezer full of meat. Um, just a quick example, today if you were a single person, uh, shopping for the week, you could pick four pieces of meat. Uh, protein, which is a pretty, pretty good amount compared to many food banks that I've been able to tour. Um, and once again, I am blown away every day by the outpouring of support from the community physically. We have so many people, I can name five people who've been volunteering at this food bank for over ten years, through various directors and managers, um, and they don't, regardless of who's in charge, they keep showing up. This community is fantastic for support. But we can always use more and, and in more, informing more people about it. So, thank you.
Brendan.
Thank you for that, Mark. It made me think of a question where if you're to donate food, like I, I think about a Costco trip.
Sure.
Right? And they, they prep all the food, but you can also buy their cryo packs in back when it comes to meat. So it's just a huge package of meat that they haven't processed. Um, in order to make it like efficient or, or whatever for people to drop off, how do you want like foods like that delivered to you?
Frozen, you mean?
Frozen or unfrozen, fully packaged, or is it, you should break everything at like, how is it that you want to receive whatever's coming in? I just don't know that process.
I see. So, um, fully packaged is usually best, um, for anything that's like meat or ready to eat prepared foods, we take a temperature of that, excuse me. We take a temperature of that every time with an infrared laser gun. Um, we're very careful about that. There are guidelines of the danger zone, which is between forty-one degrees and a hundred and thirty-five degrees. No food can be in that temperature for two hours. Otherwise it's trash. We make sure no spoilage it, to the best of our ability. Um, things that are in a very large package, uh, sometimes can be breaking down, broken down by volunteers and sealed depending on our guidelines through the state and the federal. Um, but we also, uh, when someone signs up, they have a color coded tag of the size of their household. So sometimes if someone has, say, a eight or nine person household, we give them those large cuts of meat or, or what, what have you. So, um, basically any size can work. Um, the, there is a Buddhist temple, the Rainbow Temple here near Truck Town. They you mentioned Costco. It seems to me they literally go to Costco and do these huge runs and give us twenty-five pound bags of rice and all these bottles of water, fruit. It's, it's amazing. Um, so we can take large donations oftentimes, yes. You mean if you were to cook a meal and bring? Yep. As, as long as the meat is sealed the way it was at the grocery store and stays within that safety zone of temperature, then we're good. Anytime. And thank you.
We've been, Mr. Tremlada.
Yeah, um, I, I would like to stay in touch. I had a fairly long conversation last week with Councilmember Perry about sustainable agriculture, which is something that's very important to me. Uh, she's diving into the farming of Snoqualmie Valley quite a bit. Um, part of that too, can you ta, have you, have you engaged farm? Can you take donations directly from a farm? So harvest a, a whole cow, harvest a whole pig, have it butchered, then delivered and broken down and freezer brab and whatnot?
Yeah. And in fact, that's interesting. I am in a conversation right now with Food Lifeline, which is an agency that we deal with about that exact thing. Um, King County is a little bit more strict on some of those, uh, those things than, than some other more rural counties or counties in the east. Um, but I am waiting back for an email, but I'm pretty sure that if that stuff is done at a, I, I may be a licensed butcher, you know, and it's cut down and broken down like that. And the, any ingredients are there and it stayed in that safety zone, then that is acceptable. And one other thing, not just meat, but with vegetables, that is wide open, fruit and vegetables. There are people who have ancient apple trees in their yard that just so much, they come and bring it in. There are multiple churches and Samantas Sori preschools that have community gardens that grow exclusively for the food bank. And that in my mind, doesn't get a lot better than not having to transport exploding fossil fuels from wherever. I mean, this is right in our community, grown by local people for free, fresh healthy produce for people who don't always have that.
Yeah, that's the conversation I think we should have because part of that is partnering with those farms or private owners.
Yes.
And then taking off the load of their back and say, look, you just grow it. We'll find the people to show up. We'll harvest it off your back and then we'll provide it. But anyways, reach out. I, I would like to have that conversation.
Please, I would love to speak with you anytime about that.
Thank you, Dylan. Thank you, Allison, and welcome again. Uh, congratulations on your new post, uh, and your leadership, Dylan. Uh, you're the greatest, so I appreciate your leadership as well. And, uh, you know that the food bank's close to my heart, so I keep my eyes and ears open at all times. So I'm so grateful that our council is so supportive as well. It's a beautiful thing. So
Thank you all.
Working together is important. Thank you again. Okay, we're going to move on to, thanks for the lights up. Moving on to introductions. Item number twelve, AB twenty-four dash zero three eight, ordinance amending AB MC fifteen dot zero two and repealing MB MC fifteen dot nineteen. Ms. Demming, would you please provide the staff report?
Thank you. On February sixth, in anticipation of the March effective date, the city council adopted updated municipal code requirements for the building code based on the published State Building Code Council building code updates. On March eleventh, the Washington Association of Building Officials notified the city that the Wildland Urban Interface Code will no longer be adopted by the State Building Code Council. The reason for this change was bipartisan bill E S B sixty-one twenty, which passed the legislature on February twenty-ninth and signed by the governor on March eighth. This bill requires new mapping to be created by the Department of Natural Resources. And although there is no specific timing, we've been told it would be at least a year and a half before this mapping will be completed. This proposed ordinances removed references to this Wildland Urban Interface Code and its associated requirements within the administrative chapter title fifteen and re, and repeals chapter fifteen point one nine in its entirety. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Demming. Do you have any, um, clarifying questions, council? Mr. Goto.
Have, have we reviewed this with the Eastside Fire and AR Fire Partners as to the impacts it might have on the work they're doing, um, or anything like that?
I have cha, I have chatted with the chief and it's, and it's consistent with what the other cities are doing or have adopted or haven't adopted. So we, we have been in conversation.
Anybody else? No. Thank you, Ms. Demming. Appreciate it. All right. If, uh, if any members of our audience would like to comment on this agenda item, we would invite you to come forward to the podium at this time. If you have requested accommodation with city clerk and wish to speak, please raise your hand uh, through the virtual platform and we will take your comments after in-person comments. Please remember to state your name and address for the record and you have three minutes to speak. Uh, you don't see anybody?
We have Michael Thomas online.
Pardon me. Michael, you're on.
Sir, thank you. Can you hear me, council?
Yes, sir.
All right, great. Hopefully this has improved. Michael Thomas, uh, twelve thirty-one, La Forest SE. Uh, I also spoke again, um, really asking for a delay of the adoption of this code on, on February sixth, where I was actually forced to attend in person when I had planned to attend remotely. However, I'm in very much alignment, um, with the rollback of this code. Uh, I would hope that folks might consider one or two other changes, but I'm very satisfied to see that the state rammed through a revision to this in the legislature and had it signed by the governor in, in warp speed. I think there are very serious problems with this code and I believe there's reasons to believe that the mapping i- is out of date. However, during the timeframe which this code was active, I saw no efforts to provide clarifying comments on the city website. I have some very serious concerns about this code. Um, for example, you know, we're being asked to, you know, save trees, you know, trees, you know, sequester carbon. Trees provide radiant shading and cooling, but yet under, under this WUIC code, many of us can view trees as now hazards. And I'm very concerned about massive removal of trees within the WUIC and nearby that really require great environmental analysis. This should require a statewide CIPA, local and county CIPA. There are other concerns I have with this, with this code. For example, the cost to comply to this code, whether it's new construction or for example, if someone who might be wanting to look to, to do an ADU or a mother-in-law suite. How do we address the costs, the increased cost of construction for this code? I also see some other problems. For example, I have challenges in, in getting contractors out to do work for me. This code is not applicable sort of, um, let's say, uh, uh, huge it sound wide. It's going to primarily affect Isipua East. So this means even fewer contractors, uh, that may be willing to come to North Bend. And now these are special requirements. And the next thing really after this lawsuit is the availability of materials. When you look at the code, the international code, it requires materials to be labeled. Are these materials even available within Washington state? I would hope that during the time at which this, um, state evaluates redoing the mapping, the folks look to deeper conflicts and messaging around this code. Do you want us to save trees or do you want our homes to be at risk for wildfires? How do we main to control our construction costs if folks want to con, kind of going to construct more housing or even afford a housing or lower cost housing? This is going to increase our costs and simply the availability of materials. We're not California. We're not, we're not yet as advanced in terms of some of the materials and availability that might be useful in mitigating wildfires, such as, you know, fire resistant woods and decking. So please take this time to really think about the code and what you're adopting as well as implications on trees, the environment costs and really, you know, our cost of living here. I really saw no value in the short term.
Michael, I, I, uh, would you like to wrap it up, please?
Yes, I saw no value in the way this code was adopted. I do see benefits in reducing code and I please take the time to evaluate what is being done here. Thank you. And this concludes my comment.
Thank you, Michael. Okay, Councilmember Jocelyn, I believe this came through CED. Would you like to make the motion?
I move to approve AB two four zero three eight in ordinance amending certain sections of the North Bend Municipal Code, Chapter fifteen point zero two and repealing North Bend Municipal Code, Chapter fifteen point one nine in its entirety as a first and final reading.
Do I have a second? Second. Okay. Uh, motion made by Mr. Jocelyn and second by Ms. Rustic. Um, Mr. Jocelyn, would you like to speak to this?
Um, I have little to say other than, you know, um, we do try and run the city government efficiently. There are times when we adopt state code as the most efficient path forward and that's what we did in this case. And then we got thrown a curve ball and it's been rescinded and so we're acting accordingly. You know, due diligence and so on and so forth. There's only so much a city of this size can take on and do. We try and strike a balance between uh, being responsive to those who live here and, uh, the, the limited resources of staff. Um, and this is just an example of kind of how that plays out at times. It's, uh, embarrassing. Just straight up, you know, two months ago, we acted in a certain fashion and here we are two months later rescinding that which we adopted. Well, I didn't, I wouldn't wish for that. It's like I said, it's embarrassing. At the same time, we adopted it because of past practice of adopting, you know, and staying compliant with state law. The state had acted in a certain fashion. We acted accordingly. Again, the state threw us a curve ball and so we're responding yet again uh, to actions that are largely beyond our control and then accord, you know, um, there seems to be some voices that are not unappreciative of the fact that we're walking this back. So, um, there you have it. I, I will certainly be voting in support and, uh, anxious to see how the DNR goes about doing their mapping. Is that something that I, uh, is near and dear to my heart? So, uh.
Thank you, Mr. Jocelyn. Ms. Rustic, do you have any comments? Thank you, Mr. Jocelyn. Ms. Rustic, do you have any comments?
I think Councilmember Jocelyn covered it. Um, in essence, this was something that we tried to be proactive on and, and now are in light of new information are revisiting it. So I will also be in support of this.
Thank you. Anybody else in council have any comments to make? Nobody? Okay, let me begin. The motion before us is to approve AB 24 dash zero three eight in ordinance amending certain sections of NB MC Chapter 15 point zero two and repealing NB MC Chapter 15 point 19 in its entirety as a first and final reading. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, we are unanimous. Motion passes unanimous unanimously. We're gonna move on to mayor. Oops, I'm sorry. We're not gonna move on that quick. We're gonna go to our last agenda item, AB 24 dash 34, motion authorizing contract with Transpo Group. Mr. Ricos, will you provide the staff report, please?
Um, I actually don't have a presentation or staff report tonight, but I'm happy to answer any questions. Um, we did discuss this item at our TPW committee meeting last week on March 26th. There were several questions by our TPW committee members and those questions were answered by the project manager then, but I can try to answer any questions tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Ricos. Any questions from our council? Ms. Rustic?
Oh, that's, that's just great. Okay, yes, I have a comment. Uh, the, and, and an explanation of, uh, why I asked to pull this from the agenda. This, uh, I plan to support this. Um, it is a contract to prepare a ADA, uh, transition plan for the public right of way areas. And this is something that um, I think is important to all residents of the community, uh, both the, the young to the seniors. And it will be a plan of areas where we will, um, potentially be asked to fund, uh, different projects depending on the outcome of this. So I think it's going to, um, address the finance committee. And in addition, um, it's going to potentially improve public health and safety. So it hits that committee. And then of course it came out of TPW. So um, I just felt that it was something that was important for us to, uh, as a council, be all aware of that this activity is going to be, uh, performed and then coming to us as some follow-up action. So, thank you.
And, um, Mr. Ri, Mr. Tremolata, excuse me?
Yeah, I do have a just a general question. Once that report is provided, is there a timeline for any of these improvements? Like when they'll have to get done? Is it forward looking or how does that operate?
Nope, there's no requirement to, to do this work.
Okay.
Any other council comments? No? Okay. If any members of the audience would like to comment on this agenda item, we would invite you to come forward to the podium at this time. Uh, if you have requested accommodation with the city clerk and wish to speak, please raise your hand through the virtual platform and we will take your comments after in-person comments. Please remember to state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes. Anybody online?
Not at this time.
Thank you very much. Uh, let's see. Okay. Councilmember Colan, will you please make the motion?
Uh, motion to approve AB 24 dash zero 34, authorizing a contract with Transpo Group for preparation of a a city of North Bend ADA transition plan for public right of way in a form and content acceptable to the city attorney and an amount not to exceed eighty nine thousand, nine hundred and eighty dollars.
Thank you. And do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Jocelyn. Uh, motion made by Councilmember Colan and seconded by Mr. Jocelyn. Ms. Colan, do you have any comments you'd like to make?
I think, uh, we've needed some ADA improvements for a while. I didn't know about the rule of needing 50 city employees, including council to get it going, but it will make improvements for the people that need them.
Thank you. Mr. Jocelyn, do you have any comments?
Uh, it is proactive and it will provide us information, which is the basis upon which we, uh, seek to make informed decisions. So I'm always supportive or almost always supportive of more information and, uh, appreciate this moving forward. I also acknowledge that a threshold of 50 staff members seems an odd uh, metric that then, uh, triggers such necessity, but I'll let that go. I certainly, I will be voting in support. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jocelyn. Anybody other, any other council member comments? No, going once, going twice. Okay, the motion before us is to approve AB 24 dash 34, authorizing a contract with Transpo Group for preparation, preparation of a city of North Bend ADA transition plan for public right of way in a form and content acceptable to city attorney in the amount not to exceed eighty nine thousand, nine hundred and eighty dollars. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we are passing that unanimous, Ms. Lee. It's tough to get that out of my mouth. Sorry. Okay, we are, we're gonna move on, looking around here. A minute pause. Uh, let's go on to mayor council and administrative concerns and, uh, initiatives. And I start with Brendan.
Nothing tonight, your honor, other than to say welcome for our new captain. Appreciate you uh, being here and being on board and definitely appreciated the, uh, presentation from the, the food bank. So, thank you.
Thank you, um, Susan. If you're ready, I can tell.
Um, yeah, welcome and, um, to our new captain. And, um, I'm gonna start donating money to food bank. I'm excited about the program. So I got it all ready on my laptop right now.
Excellent. Ms. Colan?
Um, our new waste management contract has started as of yesterday. Recology, I myself have used their, uh, customer service already and it has so far, so good, been pretty great.
Mr. Tremolata?
Sure, I've got a few things. We have a busy month ahead. Uh, April 19th is still Tenant Trailhead will be opening. So keep an eye out for that. On April 23rd, I will also be at the Inspire Breakfast for Encompass and you can all check it out on their website. It's at 7:30 in the morning at Snoqualmie Casino. And then another event which I'm excited to participate in, um, with Councilmember Watten from Snoqualmie is on April 26th. And if you're interested, we still need volunteers. It is a project with Snow Valley Innovation Center and Empower Youth Network, uh, at Remlinger Farm, Remlinger Farms. And it is a business competition for 40 high school students, uh, from Mount Si. Um, and I believe in a surrounding school, um, but I think mostly Mount Si students, uh, for, and it'll be hosted by Pete Nelson. Um, it'll be back to back Fridays, the 26th and the 3rd. Uh, students will be broken up into teams with business mentors and, uh, have a business challenge. It's gonna be a great event. Um, very excited to engage with the high schoolers, um, and other professionals in the valley. So come check it out. You can see it on the website for Snow Valley Innovation Center and Empower Youth Network, if you'd like.
Thank you, Mr. Tremolata and Ms. Rustic.
Uh, yes, um, I just wanted to, uh, mention that, uh, at the last council meeting on, uh, March 19th, we had a extensive review with Puget Sound Energy regarding, um, power outages. And during that meeting, they did, uh, offer to follow up with us on a number of items. And so I'm just sharing that, uh, they did in fact do that. And, uh, we discussed at today's public health and safety meeting, um, some of the city's next steps, the council's next steps. And so we'll be continuing, uh, the dialogue that was started at that council meeting. So I really appreciate their engagement and their follow-up. That's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Rustic and Mr. Jocelyn.
Uh, I don't mean to steal any of the mayor pro temps thunder. Were he going to speak to the workshop that we held, uh, last week as a council, uh, to address, um, how to expend some funds? And there was a lot of, or I felt coalescing around improvements to William Henry Taylor Park in, in downtown North Bend. Uh, the council has in the past engaged in, and there exists now a master plan for that park. And, uh, I left very stimulated and excited and I'm anxious to see that that continues to move forward amongst staff. I think there's the possibility for a significant amount of funding that could actually, uh, jumpstart and bring uh, sort of a new heart to this or a second heart perhaps to the uh, central downtown core in our lovely little town here. And, uh, I just wanted to, uh, highlight that this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jocelyn and Mr. Gotal.
Well, thank you for highlighting and I wasn't going to bring that up until we did a committee report, but I'm glad you brought it up because I felt the same way. Um, there's some serious funds and that would be a really nice project to get underway. Um, what I just wanted to talk about is, is there were some statements made that I want to clarify. Um, the water conservation ordinance we've had, there's been limited impact, no impact by innocent citizens. To date, Mark, has any been, been fined by that?
No.
Number two, if you are concerned of your property and how your property is set up and you're you feel you're close to the wildlife wildfire interface, please contact Eastside Fire and Rescue to get an assessment of your home. We saw in the most recent fire that came out wildfire we had a couple of years ago, you can have as green of a yard as you want. Those houses that had green yards still went up on fire. It clearly is, you need to clear out a certain defensible safe space around your house. And I would encourage you to get your information from sources like Eastside Fire and Rescue or people that are associated that understand what happened in that last fire and what we can do. Keep that from happening here. Yes, we're not California. We haven't got to that point, but we are gonna see wildlife wildfire more on the west side than we have over the next few years because of the weather. So please talk to the professionals, listen to them. They are the ones that can help you save your property. Thank you.
Oh, your honor. Yeah. Yes, yes, may.
Thank you for bringing that up, um, Alan, because today at Public Health and Safety, uh, Deputy Chief was there talking specifically about dry season prep. And on May 6th, at 10 AM here, there will be a Q and A by an Eastside Fire and Rescue professional who can answer all those questions and address those concerns at this time. So the fire department is clearly aware of that. We talked about it there and how it's important for us to be educated on this so that we can communicate that and disseminate that information on the public. So there are ways for folks to get information and there will be uh, an in-house session here for folks to come and attend as well. And they will be looking into if there's a Zoom call-in feature or not.
Thank you. I mean, it's really important for people to get the right information and not listen to information that is not.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Gotal. And, um, Mr. 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 Miller?
Nothing for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Okay, the yard waste recycling program will be held this Saturday, April 6th from 8 AM to noon at Public Works. Those attending are asked to use the Public Works entrance off of North Bend Way. Beginning April 1st, the city of North Bend reopened its Public Works Administration building to the public. In-person Public Works customer service was moved to City Hall in 2019 and we are excited to be back at this location. Please access the Public Works Administration building by a North Bend Way only. Regional Animal Services of King County is currently running the License For Your Love Of The Pet Of Pets campaign through June 30th, 2024, where you can license your cat or dog, renew an expired license and your late fees will be waived. Licensing your pet can reunite you with a lost pet quickly 24/7. Helps fund the care and adoption of shelter animals and supports the protection of people and pets in your community. Licensing, licensing your pet is easy online at kingcounty.gov slash backslash license my pet. Uh, in person at City Hall or QFC. And a thank you to our presenters tonight, those online and in person. And thank you to our great couns, great council, great staff in your entirety and for all that you do. Everybody have a great night and enjoy this weather. Oh, and by the way, we will now recess as I get excited, uh, for an executive session. Wait, there's more. Uh, we will now recess the meeting for an executive session to discuss property acquisition pursuant of RCW 42 dot 30 dot 1101B. The executive session is, is expected to last 15 minutes. As there's no action anticipated as a result of the executive session, the videotaping of this meeting will now stop at this time. Thank you, everybody.